Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the opening meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are being audio and video recorded this evening. Our first order of business tonight is 117 Seacong Street. It was a scheduled public hearing. We've received correspondence today from the applicant. The applicant respectfully requests that they withdraw without prejudice their application before the zoning board of appeals without prejudice. So this matter is no longer for this board, and I will request a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing in accordance with Chapter 40A, Section 9, Norfolk zoning bylaws, D-2, D-5B, for a commercial kennel and variance relief for dimensional requirements at 117 Seacong Street in the R3 district, reference map 23, Lot 54, Block 54.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept to accept the withdrawal of the application for relief to the Norfolk zoning committee without prejudice for 117 Seacong Street, Norfolk, Mass., in accordance with Chapter 40A, Section 9 of the Norfolk bylaws, D-2, D-5B, for a commercial kennel, special permit, and for variance relief.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I think we have to do a vote. We have to go around.
Okay. That would go only if we were granting a special permit or variance.
Okay.
We're good with just an open vote. Okay, so we're done with that. All right. We have our next public hearing is scheduled for 7:30, and we cannot begin until 7:30 by law, and that's 14 Cottage Street, a special permit. Are those folks here tonight? Okay, right there in the front row?
We can go through the minutes and approve the minutes.
You guys want to do the minutes and get those out of the way?
Sure.
One question. The letter that says 123 Seacong?
That's just correspondence.
You don't have the letter. Only Mike and Chris have that letter.
Oh, about the one.
All right, I had emailed it to you, but not everybody has copies of the 117 Seacong.
That's just correspondence.
Okay, is this a different letter in here?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with 117.
Okay, got you, got you.
Joe, that's just a correspondence requesting postponement until our next meeting.
Till our next meeting.
That's the...
Right, so it didn't make it to the schedule tonight? It's not on the schedule?
It's not on the schedule, right. That's the folks that...
Next door.
Next door, that do the horse show.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Project.
All right, minutes. Let's...how many do we have tonight?
Just two.
Just two?
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's begin with January 28th.
January 28th and February 24th.
All right, let's begin with January 28th.
Mm-hmm. Good. It wasn't that easy. It's worth a waste of any time.
on the tracks?
Behind it? Right on Main Street? I mean, right behind...
You know Paul Kelly, 25 Rockland?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there. He's going to be doing another project right there.
Yeah.
Would that be a 40B also?
I don't know.
Everybody seems to be building apartment buildings.
Yeah, because it'd be cluster housing.
Yeah, probably all of it. It'd be valuable for us.
Can they build like an apartment building?
40B?
Or just...no, no, just a rental unit, a rental building.
I suppose they could. Could use some nice apartments. Feel like going in there once in a while.
What?
I don't know, people probably would use them, don't you think?
What?
Apartments? Yeah.
It's right on the T, you know?
Yes, right on the T.
Right, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
It's fitting business.
Yeah, I would feel that people would use that convenience of having a apartment right there.
No question. And that would finally develop to downtown.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, you know, a lot of people in downtown, doors downtown would be great. I don't know if it would follow...it might be another 40B, could be.
I think it's got to be because it's going to be the zoning.
Yeah.
Does Chris have to make a motion to accept?
Yes. Ready?
Can anybody?
Anybody can, so if you'd like to, you can.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed for the Town of Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on January 28th, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
February 24th, minutes?
Do you go away on vacation, Joe? Do you go away on vacation?
No, I've made a trip. I went to New York last weekend, I'm going to New York tomorrow again. Just helped my mom out, so just...otherwise, why?
I just wanted to...you go away on vacation?
Well, sometimes I try to go away with the kids, but it didn't work out this time. But again, we went to New York for a quick weekend.
Where's your mom?
She's in New Orleans, but helping her out. She had moved recently. She had surgery and stuff.
Where is she, Joe, alone?
Yeah, now she's in Babylon, North Babylon. You know, I moved into a new...
I'm from Freeport, my aunt's from Massapequah, so...
Right, I used to live in Massapequah.
Small world.
Probably dated my wife when I was younger.
Me?
Oh, boy. We're a very close bunch.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Public hearing, yeah, okay. Hey, go, Don.
You wanted to do it.
Yeah, you seemed to want to make a name for yourself.
Yeah, continue.
Trying to take my thunder.
Yeah, I know.
Let him try, let him try.
Chris, this one's all yours.
No, 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 go ahead.
I think it's in my way, I want to second the thing, and I can't do it anymore. All right, I'll be quiet on the second.
We need to groove this position for someone else.
I'll keep my mouth shut then. Go ahead, Joe.
What, I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from February 24th?
Do I have a second? I second.
I abstain.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tough crowd.
Look, it makes us markets kicking in, huh, there?
Yeah, one, I think there was a couple tonight. All right, Mr. Weeder, what do we have first tonight? 7:30, 14 Cottage?
We have a 14 Cottage, yeah.
Are we supposed to preview anything first? We have two applications to preview?
Hmm?
Did we already preview the applications?
No.
Oh, we can do that.
This is ours, this is it. We've not seen this yet.
We have five minutes.
No, I was going to say though... Oh, all right, so nothing's officially being previewed tonight? I just saw these two packages.
We're allowing the public hearing. We'll allow the public hearing tonight.
Okay. No, I just saw these two packages sitting here.
Oh, that's all for next month?
That's right.
You got homework.
Oh, yes. I know that, that's what I'm saying.
You should have homework.
Woo-hoo. So I was taking a moment to acknowledge that we got these...
That's right. Amy's way ahead of us. Lots of homework.
Okay, here's 14 Cottage. Nice map.
Is there something new in the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act?
Say again?
Is this something new, the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act?
Yes.
They have to put that in now?
Yeah.
Is that for spud turtle?
They have to contact them and make sure.
Oh.
Could be a salamander in there.
Those darn salamanders.
What's a salamander's kind of...
Big ones.
Big ones like that?
Holy smoke.
What, is this their summer season in Ecuador, or winter, or what's going on down there?
It's basically fall.
Oh, okay. So it's what, 90 or 100?
Eighty...eighty-four, eighty-five.
Nice beaches.
We didn't go on a vacation, we went on overseas adventure travel, so it's much more of an adventure than a vacation. What that means is when they wake up at 5:00, they wake up at 5:30, and you go for a two-hour hike, and then you come back, and then you have breakfast, and then you go snorkeling. It's more active.
Oh.
Last one I'll ever do.
Jesus. Okay, whose idea was that? Mrs.?
Let's not talk about it now.
All right, that was your wife's idea. Did you go to the Lions Club meeting this week? Oh, you weren't here, you weren't back yet?
No, I was back, but I was so tired.
You didn't go?
I didn't, last minute I didn't.
My wife got home late. They had a good speaker, but she got home late.
I heard they did a lot of partying.
Oh, maybe that's why, she told me the speaker went on forever. It was the partying.
It's a code.
Oh, that's the Lions, I gotta learn the Lions code.
Talk about it. His wife was at the meeting. I know she's there. I know where everybody's wife is.
Excuse me?
Oh, so there's a lot of partying that went on after the speaker. Oh, she didn't tell me that part.
That's why I didn't go, I didn't want to tell.
Those lions. She's riding on the float in the parade, she told me, with somebody.
I hear that you volunteered to apply the roses to the float.
Oh, my God. Our ratings are going up this month, guys, on TV.
Yeah, I know, we should get more of the Bud ads, you know?
We're just trying to kill time, because we can't start until 7:30, we've got two more minutes to go, so that's why...well, those of you watching us at home are just trying to kill time, so we apologize for the silly talk.
T-O-C total?
What does T-O-C mean? I don't know. I think it is, yeah.
Total? The existing non-conditioning in the same...
Sorry, I remember knocking.
About...
No, see.
That's what was there, cottage was there, garage was there, this is what he wants to do.
You know what I don't know about, you know, I've known it before, there was no...is there a legend or anything that says?
Can we do that?
I don't know, I haven't put enough time into it, I don't know if we want to deliberate on it tonight, but we'll at least hear it, right?
Okay.
I'm not at that point yet.
You're an expert in stuff.
Okay, 7:30, good evening, gentlemen. The applicant is Thomas Orlando. You can introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name's Peter Lavoy, I'm the project manager, project engineer for this project.
We have to open the public hearing.
Okay, Lavoy, just an okay. In one second.
He jumped the gun.
I jumped the gun.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to open the public hearing to Thomas Orlando for a special permit application in accordance with General Laws 40A, Section 9, as amended, Section F4B of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, to allow the demolition and reconstruction of an existing non-conforming single-family residence which does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original structure. The property is located at 14 Cottage Ave., Cessars Map 4, Block 15, Lot 15, and is in the R2 zoning district.
Okay, I'm a little rusty, I haven't done this for a couple of months. Now, Peter, you're off.
Okay, like I said, my name's Peter Lavoy, I work with Gary here in Hawnon, who is the engineer on the project. With me tonight is Tom Orlando, he's in the back with a red swish, I mean the...
Okay, so you're the owner?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have a revised plan that I wanted to hand out.
Okay, so this one that we have is no good, okay?
This one shows a 36-foot setback from the road, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And these are in color.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Jeez, lost my touch.
Why did you change the proposed structure to be moved from 36 to 25 feet?
Because of the topography. I can show you some pictures which we have. The original was submitted before I did any soil testing for the septic, I wanted to get on the agenda, so in the meantime, I went out and did soil testing in this area here, and when I went out there, I met Tom out there, and we looked at the grades, and when you see the grade change from the front of the lot to the back, you'll understand why. And we also took pitches downgrading, and so what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to minimize any grading on the back of this lot, and that is the reason why we moved it forward. Okay?
I drove by and looked at it, so it is a steep grade.
Yeah, it's, I was, you know, it doesn't, I mean, of course it doesn't look steep on the plan, but when you go out there, it's pretty steep. So I'll just, I'm just going to go through my presentation.
Go ahead.
Okay.
He jumped the gun too. He's supposed to love to do his presentation first.
I can't ask a question? No problem, no problem. All right, you two.
This is a tough day, I'll tell you.
Talk that man into days' pay.
Don't say "we all," there's only two of you that seem to be very rusty. The rest of us are very sharp.
Okay, so the lot is at, the lot's location is 14 Cottage Ave., 14 Cottage Ave. runs this way, but it's not developed. Basically, what's there is a driveway for a circle, and the driveway goes down to the main street down here. So this is not developed from here over to Franklin Ave., and then this is not developed from here over, so there is no development of the road in front of here except for this circle area, and I do have a picture of it, and I can show you. So we have an existing house way down here, it's only seven feet off the property line, and it's down at elevation 180. Then we have another structure in this area here, which is a cottage, it's a small cottage there, and then we have an existing garage up at the pavement location, and the elevation there is 198, so just in that short a distance. From back to front of the lot, along the back property line, we have an elevation of 174, and at the front of the property, we have an elevation of 198. Just to give you another elevation, if you go down to Popularic Street, which is below this, and the lake, the elevation at the lake is 112. So from that location to the back of the property line, you're looking at 112 to 174. So I'll show you the pictures, I can show them now. So this is, this is the back property corner looking down towards Popularic, Popularic Street. So you can see here is the back property corner, whoops. That basically is this marker right here. And then there's the property line, and there's the existing structure. You can see there's the existing structure here, and it just drops, and you're looking at the top of a roof over here, so that's why...
That's our house. Right at the bottom.
So we're trying to, that's why we moved it closer to Cottage Ave., to minimize, because this house is not structurally sound, so we're going to demolish the house.
Is this the cottage or the 1.5-story wood frame?
It's the 1.5, it's way down here.
Got you.
So the exist, all the structures on this lot is going, they're going to be raised. So, and then, another thing is, another portion of this is, this lot here owns this L-shaped lot as well, and it has an existing garage on it. So the two lots together are roughly, you know, 29,000 square feet if you add the two. This lot here is 21,000 square feet, and this lot here is 7,200 square feet.
Are those lots not contiguous, is that, does that road actually own?
Yeah, the road does bisect them, but it is private.
That's questions.
So, the owners of the lots are butting it on to the center. But we didn't, we didn't, we didn't look at it that way, you know, we just looked at the property line this way, and so we're trying, we're trying to do the best we can, meeting the front yard setback, but, you know, we have an existing structure here which is only five feet off the front property line, so we're not making it any worse by putting this structure here at 25 feet. But all other setbacks meet, we meet the side yard setback, we meet the rear yard setback for the rest of the zoning. So the existing structure is, has an existing well that we're going to keep and we're going to try to use. It is on a cesspool, so that will be abandoned. This area down here will be used as a patio area, so we're going to not, we're not going to change the grade there, we're just going to demolish or raise the system and just grade it or fill in the foundation and use that as a patio area. He's going to try to keep the retaining wall, he may have to replace the existing retaining wall there, but the plan is to keep this grade the same to minimize the grading. And then, by moving the structure forward to 25, we're going to do an eight-foot foundation, and that gives us a walkout in the back, and we will, like I said, minimize the grading. Also, the driveway will come along, and it will be a drive under, so that's, we're going to minimize that. So we're trying to not disturb as many, if you go out there, the trees in this, in this area, that doesn't really show it, but there are a lot of large pines that are all throughout this lot here. Like I said before, we did do, we did do soil testing here, it was witnessed by the town, so this, this system is sized properly for the structure, and this is how we would, we would grade out the lot. Another picture we have here, this garage is the garage right in this location, you can see this, this is the turnaround area here, pavement line.
Could you angle this a little bit more for, if you wouldn't mind, just so some of us on this side can see.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Did you see that, did you, I can, you can, if you want, you can, I can take this and you can look at them.
Nope, just showing it right there, I can see a little bit.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, like, I just wanted to point, you know, this is that turnaround area there, and that's the existing garage that is right there, that's five feet off the property line, so that fence is pretty much the property line.
It's just being taken from this other piece of property, this other...
It's being taken right from the driveway, yeah. So that would be, this, the stone island is right there, they located, they located what was on our property.
You mentioned the tree...
Joe, we're going to hold our questions until after the presentation is completely done, thank you.
Really spoke.
That's it?
I really got the word out. That's, that's pretty much...
That's it, okay.
I can answer questions now.
All right, all right, Joe, go ahead.
Oh, no, Don wants to go first. Now, you mentioned the trees that are on the property.
Correct.
And have you actually shown any plans with clear cutting or any cuttings that have been done here?
It would be, it would be basically at the, at the limit of grading, they would, they would just come along here. That would be the limit. But there are a lot of, lot of large trees along the back that we wanted, not...
Urban.
Yes.
Sorry, I got a question.
Can we ask questions?
Hang on. The way this works is the board will ask questions of the applicant, and then we'll open it up to the applicant, so no problem. We're all a little rusty tonight, or some of us are. All right, go ahead. Don?
So, so basically, every existing structure, with the exception of the garage, that's on this land, will be raised.
Correct, and they're not structurally sound. There's, I mean, there's a lot of, if you go out there, there's a lot of trash in this area near the house, the house is full of trash.
When I drove up on Cottage Avenue and just looked out of the car, did I see the, I saw the garage, did I see the, did I have seen the 1.5-story wood frame, concrete foundation, the raised structure or the cottage? Which would have I, as I looked, I just kind of glanced over.
You would have glanced, if you would have glanced over, you probably would have saw the cottage.
Okay, the cottage.
Because the house is, is way down at the far left corner of the lot. You might have saw the roof, and you might have thought it wasn't a butter's roof, probably, but it's not even close.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The, I guess I'm a little confused, the 1.5-story wood frame structure, is that a home?
That is a home, yes.
Living in now, or is it, is it abandoned, is it, what is it?
I thought, I don't know, Tom? It's abandoned now.
How long's it been abandoned for?
Eight years.
How many?
Eight years.
Okay, and then there's a cottage, which is, when you, I think of a cottage as a house, but that's not the house, that's a, what is that?
It's just an extra structure that they must have had, you know, way back then.
Accessory building, or...
Uh...
Does it have water?
I don't know if it has water.
Does the owner know if it has water? Is there a bathroom in it, or?
There was a bathroom in it, but...
If it had water, if it had a bathroom, it had water.
Yeah, but the floor, I mean, it wasn't livable at all.
Our house. It looks like a camp cottage.
Yeah.
Okay, someone tell me if it was a house or not a house. Did it have electricity, did it have water?
It had electricity.
Had electricity, did it have plumbing?
I, I don't know.
Anybody know?
It did.
It did have plumbing?
You can kind of see the bathroom and everything in it, it's all rotting away.
Yeah, when I looked in it, I couldn't see anything really.
Did the home on the left corner have plumbing?
Yes, that has plumbing.
Did that have electricity?
That has electricity.
Okay, we're getting there. Okay, did the garage have electricity? The one to be raised? The one to be raised, yes, there's two garages.
It does have electricity.
Okay. And the existing garage across the street, we're leaving as it is?
That is correct, we're not touching that.
Okay. Say again? No, I'm not going to ask that. So... And the existing garage to be raised was only five feet from the lawn?
That is correct, it's five feet from the property line.
In fact, it's like almost two pieces of property separated by Cottage Ave. On the books, is that truly considered a property line, or do they, they don't show the properties combined as one?
I'm not sure, that's, yeah, because this is still a private way.
the, I saw the garage. Did I see the, did I have seen the, uh, one-point-five-story wood frame, concrete foundation, the raised structure, or the cottage? Which would have I, as I looked, I just kinda glanced over.
You would've glanced, if you would've glanced over, you probably would've saw the cottage.
Okay, the cottage.
Because the house is, is way down at the far left corner of the lot. You might've saw the roof, and you might've thought it wasn't a butter's roof, probably, but it's not even close.
Yes, sir. The, I guess I'm a little confused. The one-point-five-story wood frame structure, is that a home?
That is a home, yes.
Uh, liv, living in now, or is it ac, is it abandoned? Is it, what is it?
Uh, I thought, I don't know, Tom. It's abandoned now.
How long's it been abandoned for?
Eight years.
How many?
Eight years.
Okay, and then there's a cottage, which is, when you s, I think of a cottage as a house, but that's not the house. That's a, what is that?
It's just an extra structure that they must've had, you know, wa, way back then.
Accessory building, or, or-
Uh-
Does it have water?
I don't know if it has water.
Does the owner know if it has water?
Cottage has water.
Is there a bathroom in it, or?
There was a bathroom in it, but, but it-
Oh, if it had wat, if it had a bathroom, it had water.
Yeah, but the floor, I mean, it wasn't livable at all.
Our house. It, it looks like a camp cottage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, someone tell me if it was a house or not a house. Did it have electricity? Did it have water?
It had electricity.
Had electricity? Did it have plumbing?
I, I don't know.
Anybody know?
They don't know?
It did.
It did have plumbing?
You can kinda see the, the bathroom and everything in it. It's, it's all rotting away.
Yeah, when I looked in it, I couldn't see anything really.
Did the home on the left corner have plumbing?
Yes, that has plumbing.
Did that have electricity?
That has electricity.
Okay, we're getting there. Okay. Did the garage have electricity?
The one to be raised?
The one to be raised, yes, there's two garages.
It does have electricity.
Okay. And the existing garage across the street, we're leaving as it is?
That is correct. We're not touching that.
Okay. Say again?
You're not gonna ask if all this net code or anything, right?
No, I'm not gonna ask that. And the existing garage to be raised was only five feet from the lot?
That is correct. It's five feet from the property line.
In fact, it's like almost two pieces of property separated by Cottage Ave. On the books, is that truly considered a property line? Or do they, they don't show the properties combined as one?
I'm not sure. That's, yeah, because this is still a private way.
Right. Right. But yet, the owner of this property owned these two segments, if you recall that.
Correct.
All right.
And the best of my knowledge, in a private way, when it's not, when the town hasn't accepted it, they own to the center. So, basically, he would own-
Right.
But that's another-
I'm just saying, were, you, you're almost taking a conservative approach to saying that that's the property frontage.
Correct, yeah.
Because conservatively, you're meeting, at least your, your, your reference point makes it conservative, saying that, well, we could've maybe considered another spot to be the setback.
I really don't know. I really don't know.
Correct, I, yeah, I'd say-
No, it's not a private way.
No.
If it's a private way, that means it's, it's owned by a private party.
Well, right, well, the other thing, I'm, what I'm thinking is if, if, if this land owner owns the halfway to the road-
Is the, um, the house, we'll call it the house. That has a full foundation?
That is correct.
That's what I'm saying.
In deteriorated shape?
Yes.
So, this, see, see, yeah.
Now, does it have a basement, or is it a ca, slab?
It does have a basement.
Basement, so basement, first floor, dormer. I can assume with the one-point-five is what you're saying?
Do we potentially have that-
Is that right?
Thing?
Correct.
Basement, first floor-
Yep.
Dormer.
Yeah, because it is pretty, it is pretty tall, yeah. So, you have a basement, first floor, second floor.
And if, if I'm correct, you're planning to remove everything, right?
Correct.
Yeah, fill, just fill it in, right?
Correct, yeah.
And the, uh, the cottage, no basement?
No basement.
Just on piers or something?
Correct. Did that have a foundation?
Size, frontage, all that stuff.
It's on piers, that's on piers.
If they own this lot halfway to the center, and they own this lot halfway to the center, isn't this one continuous law?
I don't know.
It's a, it's a good question, you know.
There's a couple of things. I don't even know if they can- This, this is the house. Now, they're moving, they're really not, they're not demolishing that and putting it there, they're moving it over here.
Well, could you, can you consider this?
That's an outbuilding.
So, can you, can you not consider that in terms of, of mitigating, uh, you know, let's pretend for me, this is a lot line?
I don't think you can.
Okay.
I don't think you can use that. That, I think, is an outbuilding as well. These are both, I think, outbuildings. This is actually, the home is being raised. Except if it's electricity and water.
Well, well, if that's the case-
If it has electricity and water. We don't know that yet. We will verify that. We'll have to verify that.
Can, can you-
But if it has electricity and water- Yes. Then it would not be an outbuilding. Correct. But we don't know that. That's what we gotta find out, yep. So, we got a couple of questions.
Yeah, but, but the, the objective here, right? So, the objective here is, um, see, I'm a little bit confused about this, because the objective here is to say, the, the question here is, can we have this? That's the question. The question is, can we have a twenty-five-foot setback? That's the question.
Right.
Okay. And so, what we don't know is whether or not, we don't know a bunch of things. One of them's, we don't know if they own to the center of the road, and if so, does it continue over here? Which means the setback begins back here somewhere. You know? So, that, that's number one. Number two, the other thing is, we don't know right now if we can use this, if we can use this and say, oh gee, they're going from a five-foot to a twenty-five-foot. That's min, that's reducing, if you caution, you know?
We need to walk the property.
Yeah.
Excuse me, can I make one comment?
Sure.
Um, I did, originally, I did contact, uh, the building inspector and explain to him my situation about the cottage and the structure, and he did agree that the cottage was a livable area, and he's, he was, he was okay with me going. So, I, he was okay with me with the original plan. Um, I did send him the new plan, but I, I never had heard back from him, um, on the, on going closer than the, the cottage. Because the wa, the way I explained it to him was, that did have a bathroom, so I was, I was feeling that it was a cottage, it was a livable area. So, that's why, when I originally submitted it, it was only, it was, it wasn't any closer than the cottage. But then after, when I walked the site and saw the topography and, and like that, then I considered, well, this is also a structure, and that's why I moved it closer. But he never got back to me on the se, on the second plan.
You don't happen to have a deed for this property, do you?
Um, I, I don't have it with me.
Okay. I was, I was cur, I mean, one, one, well-
But what, but you're looking for the existing one?
Yeah, yeah, because you know what? I'm curious as to what the deed may say about this private way here.
Yeah, I mean, you own this site, you own this, right?
Right.
And if you own this, you own halfway here and halfway here, so you won't, this is continuous. So, that changes your lot line, right?
I was just wondering if that, it would benefit you.
Right, it might benefit, but that, but then, I don't know what rights, because it, it still is a private ad, it still is a road, and it's still on, you know, the town still recognized that it's a way. So, you know, would you have to discon, discontinue that road? That's the question. That was another question that had come up that-
The town doesn't own that road.
No, but it's still a way, and it's, it's still recognized at a, as a, as a way.
Does the town currently plow that?
Can't plow it, because it's undeveloped.
Okay. The, if I look at the proposed single-family house-
All right, so that's-
And I look at the-
All right, there's gonna be something that would prevent him from-
Left corner, front.
I don't think that's gonna work.
No, no, of the, the proposed, left cor, right there. And then if I drop back to the cottage to be raised, to the frontmost corner-
Yep.
What's the difference in that footage?
It's probably five feet.
Let me ask this question. Right? Let me ask this question. Suppose there's nothing on this lot at all, absolutely nothing, okay? They come and say, listen, we wanna build a house here. We have to put it here because it's a park. Can we get a, can we get a, you know, a special permit or whatever, because of, you see what I'm saying? In other words, pretend there's no house, I don't care about this, this, or this. A lot of pieces of land, I'm gonna put a house on it.
We have to do a variance.
You have to do a variance.
Yes, if you're gonna do it that way, you have to do a variance.
I, I'm wondering if that, is that a viable option? You know what I mean? Is that a-
I don't know if it's necessary, because-
Yeah.
Here's a critical issue. If this is at all considered livable residence-
Yeah.
All right. What he's saying is, the distance between this and this is five feet.
Did Bob deem that a livable residence?
This is already here.
That, I think, was.
So, so this distance is grandpa from here to here.
Yeah.
If he was to rebuild this thing as it is-
He's fine.
He'd do, he'd do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
The cottage is livable.
He wants to expand it.
What did Bullock say?
Here is the issue. The issue is, this is twenty-five versus, I imagine, this was thirty-six or something.
Yeah, we, we, we know, we, we can't use this?
Well, I don't know that.
Uh, see, see, because if we could, then it'd be a-
Correct, because that's considered an outbuilding.
Or, or is it? Is it?
Usually garages are.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, this is the only real question, which-
All right, so-
That can be dealt with a special permit.
What do we wanna do next? Do we wanna take it, it's-
Yep, we'll take a site visit. Because it's an existing structure that's made-
Okay.
Yeah. Make the case it's a little less conforming.
Do you gentlemen have any more questions before I open it up to a butter's?
Hey, Bob. Doesn't put a lot, he's got a copy of Crete Spritz on there.
Do you have any more questions? I'm gonna open it up to a butter's. Okay. Any questions from a butter's?
I have one right here.
Yes, sir. Could you identify your, excuse me, could you identify yourself, please?
Hey, we've got a two midway out, and I just put a leaching field there. And I, uh, by myself, I bought a paper road, leading leg, we had fifty foot wide, and I had to move my leaching field that I put in one foot away, because it's not the center of the, the, the paper road that's my lot line, it's the edge. It's not the middle, it's the edge. So, I don't own to the middle of the, the paper road.
Okay.
You're assuming on Cottage Ave. You assume that's half of yours. It's not-
I wasn't, I wa, this plan, no, I was not assuming-
Well, I, I thought I heard that.
No, I did, I did state that, but I'm not assuming it, because I'm, I'm using the edge of the right-of-way as my property line, that's what I am.
Okay, well, I, I thought I agreed to say-
No, I, I did say that, I did say that. No, I did say that, but I'm-
Another thing is, the, one of the, um, buildings you say, I mean, electricity and true, is actually, it's a, electricity's come from fifteen Cottage Ave, another house, which is an underground, very service, coming from a, 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 the electricity to that, that, oh, house. I mean, it's a, um, an outbuilding.
So, it doesn't have a service?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's, it's coming off, it's a feeder of another house.
Okay.
Never had electricity, never had water, and, and the middle of the road is, throughout the middle of the road, is the edge of the road.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Is he in a butter?
Uh, yeah, uh, midway out, I'm down the end of the road.
Okay, okay, okay.
Sean Davenport, eighteen Old Populatic Road. Uh, I'll be a butter directly below the standing, uh, structure that they want to have raised. Um, I have-
Can you speak up?
I'm sorry. I have lots of concerns as far as drainage. We've always had drainage problems on Populatic, Old Populatic Road and that area, and if he changes the grade of the land, or adjusts the grade of the land, or removes too many trees, we're gonna have a water slide coming down that, coming down that property. Also, I'm concerned about when he raises the pro- Uh, ra, there we go, I'm sorry. When he raises the house, about the debris that's gonna be coming down onto my hill goes. Onto my land. Um, it's, like he said, seven feet is the distance, the seven feet, and then eleven feet at the other corner of that house is what the distance is to my land.
Okay.
Um, I don't have a problem with a house being there, I just want it properly done and properly, you know, properly, properly done in there. But I do have concerns about drainage, just, uh, also as far as the driveway coming, sloping down towards the extreme grade that is there at Old Populatic. I have concerns about a water, just water running straight down that system. When we get a heavy rain, that rain comes straight down Old Populatic Road between the houses, but right through my yard, actually, at one point, but pretty much right through those, all those houses and everything. So, changing, uh, paved driveway or anything of that nature could cause just major issues coming down as far as flooding. Um, I know that the, by digging there a little bit in that property myself, that it is lots of sand and very, very, it'll, it'll very much give away, removing trees, it will cause lots of issues and stuff as far as drainage, and, you know, if he is going to build a prop, a, a building or a property there, I would like some sort of a retaining wall, if he is changing some sort of grade, that would prevent this issue of just washing, the landslide washing down towards, uh, towards the properties.
It already does that.
So, those are, those are some of the concerns I do have as far as that, that, the building of this.
If I can just clarify, what I heard was-
Thank you. Now, excuse me, uh, Don-
Sorry.
You're Mr. Dap-
Devon.
Sean Davenport.
Davenport, okay, so you're right-
I'm directly below the, the, uh, the house, that structure that is-
Okay, you're, that's, okay, I see where you are, okay.
On the left-hand side of that lot.
Okay, yep.
And it's really more like two st-
It is, when he says one-point-five, the thing is massively higher.
And then to the left of you is, is Mr., is it Bremlist?
Bremlist is to the left.
To the left.
It's to the right, uh-
And to the right of you is Miller.
Right.
So, you're, those are the two, okay. Okay, I just wanted to get a sense of where you are. Okay.
And also, our property line is, is right up to the, almost to that structure.
Yeah, it's almost to the structure. Like I said, it's seven feet, we are seven feet away from his, that, that structure as it stands now.
The existing home.
Yep. And it has, what it has is a weird, like, on the second story, it has like sixteen-foot post going up, holding up a overhanging structure on that, on that, uh, on that thing. It is extremely badly built and it is a bad thing.
Yeah, we're very excited to-
Want to address some of those, uh, address some of those issues?
We're excited to have it torn down, because it is a very dangerous house as far as it is sitting on the property, but we, it's gonna be done, we want assurances as far as debris coming down the hill, as far as drainage, as far as erosion, um, and trees, that we don't have a major issue of just coming right down on top of our, our property, because it'll make, it'll render my property useless. It'll just eat away at my property. And then, we'll be basically in trouble, because we, we, we actually have a shed structure directly below that, that area as well, so, you know? And, uh, we do have a cement retaining wall down there ourselves. We're the only ones on that road with a cement retaining wall. But we are concerned of major erosion coming down that hill, and also during construction, vehicles, and any sort of heavy equipment up there on that hill bringing down, again, any sort of issues in the structure.
Didn't mention that there is a retaining wall up there?
I know someone.
I've never seen one.
There's a retaining wall in front of the house? So, you walk down-
But not, but not facing Populatic.
No. No, no, I didn't, no, I never, I never, I never said that.
Oh, I thought that was-
We, we looked at the property when it was first up for sale, and they tore the whole property and looked at, looked at the whole structures and everything, we were-
You're gonna use the existing well, or put a new well in?
We're gonna use the existing well.
Use the existing well, okay. It says installing a new well.
Can you address some of his concerns that he raised?
I mean, that's one of the main reasons why we're trying to move the house forward, so we can do less grading on the lot. So that, that's why we moved the house toward, I mean, we can look at doing, taking the roof runoff and putting it into the ground, so there'd be no, no direct discharge onto the grass area. The driveway, we could probably collect, we could put a catch basin to collect and direct all the water to a catch basin that would go into the ground and not run over, overland off, off the property. So, we can look at that, I haven't looked at that.
It sounds like Mr. Davenport's concern, though, is, as I look here, is it would appear that there's about an 18-foot drop, 18, 10-foot drop from the back of this structure to Mr. Davenport's property, relatively steep. It sounds like his concern is, and don't let me paraphrase your concern, please correct me, but it sounds like you're not concerned about the elimination of the structure, but you're very concerned with, A, the process as is eliminated, and B, what is left as to the results to cause significant erosion to your property, because there is, there is a very, it looks like nine feet between that structure and your property line.
Seven feet to, then a 12.
Well, just to let you know, Tom does work in construction, and he does demolish houses for a living, for Milbrook Homes, modular home company in Walpole, so he, he has worked on projects like this before, he did a job in West Roxbury that was, you know, the back of the house was right on Route One, so he was able to demolish that house, and there, no debris ever fell into the highway over there, so he, he does have experience, you know, demolishing homes and without causing, they will, I mean, we can submit something to the, to the board if they would like to see something in writing, and how we plan on removing the house, and what steps we would take to ensure that no debris would fall over onto, you know, Mr. Davenport's house or, or his shed.
I'm also concerned about picking up debris on the property and having stuff on the property and such, it's probably, it's a very steep, very steep hill, we all agree on that.
Correct.
But, again, it's, it's more of the, as you're working on this and you're tearing this down, and now you're changing the grade in the slightest bit, and you're taking away all these trees, there's no retention for any of that mud and the rain to come down, and it comes down, and when it comes down that place, you, you will see a flood happen. We were flooded the first year we moved in. It is a flood zone down below at, at Populatic.
And you're saying the taking of trees would be because you have to put it in to demolish the house, you have to take trees?
Absolutely, you're gonna take the trees out to demolish the house, he's gonna want some trees out just to have a yard, try to have some sort of thing, and he's gonna be changing the grade, even if he says it's in the slightest bit. The concern is, what, how much of that slightest bit is it, and what are you going to do to stop, not just throw dirt down, we want some sort of a, something to prevent that dirt that you're gonna put down from coming down the hill the next rainstorm and such, so we need some sort of retention to stop whatever your raising of the grade is going to be.
Right, and that's what, that's what I am, that's what I, yeah, I never look, I did not look at that, so, I was saying that I could add some catch basins in the driveway, so that runoff coming down the driveway wouldn't go straight.
But we're talking about a retaining wall, we want some, we're not talking-
Yeah, and during construction, what are you gonna do during construction to, to prevent that from happening while everything's being-
We'll always put a silt fence and hay bales up on the front and top of the building.
Okay.
We have a plan, and that's going back, you know, staying 20 feet, I think, off the back walk line, leaving all the trees.
Well, you've got no choice in that matter as far as the house, because it's only seven feet, you can't say, I'm gonna be 20 feet away from the property, and the house is 16 feet wide, but it's only seven feet from the property, you're already, you're already on top of the house to try to demolish it, you're right, you're 20 feet.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing the ground.
No, I know, I'm just saying, you're still a bit 20 feet of that.
Do you have a seat?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about after construction, the house, the whole thing, the hill, is so steep, that any rainfall that comes down that way, it's an accident happening, any kind of disturbance of trees, that, it's all sand. It's not a landslide, it can't be planted at that corner. The town didn't asphalt my road for that reason, so it's a sad road, so there's no erosion on that hill. The hill is a very precarious condition. If you're sand, if you went, if you ran out of it, you'll see.
It sounds like we're gonna be taking a walk of property walk. All the trees, and to get this, all the sand, and rain to his yard, and this is probably Populatic.
I'm just saying, you're in a fine site, you're in a fine site.
They want it seen, taken down, they're just concerned how we does it. We gotta do it, and see it. And we gotta do something.
Okay, we're gonna, okay, do you have a question, sir? Yes, sir. All right, so-
My name is Sean Noonan, I live in one Populatic Street Extension. Basically, all this property right here is mine, so I have a couple of issues, I don't have any paperwork with me, but my well is practically right around here, and I'm not sure what the distance is from a well to a septic, but I do believe I have a drawing at home that shows a circle saying that, that was the, you know, obviously there is a boundary between a well and the neighbor's septic, right, so I'm just concerned about that. Again, I have no issues with someone building a house here. One issue I have is that, we were here two years ago, trying to prevent somebody from taking an existing footprint, moving the existing footprint to build a house. Now, there is a lot of footprints around this area, so I'm a little concerned that we're gonna open up a procedure here where someone can take a cottage and start putting up colonials up there, because there is footprints of old little shacks, cottages, and I don't want that to happen up there, it's a nice private area. I have, I too have an issue with the trees, because all these trees come down now, I'm open to, there's a lot of wind comes up there, that's, that's what protects me from the wind that comes off that lake there, so that is issue number three, I guess. During construction, obviously, this is cottage Ave is an easement to my property, so I'm concerned about construction equipment coming in there, the road's already torn up, we call the town every couple of weeks, can you please help us fix the road? We're trying, we're out there with shovels and wheelbarrows trying to fix it ourselves, because the town doesn't want to do anything, he plows the road, but it won't repair the road, so I'm a little concerned about that, so, I guess they're my concerns right now, I probably have a lot more if I sat down and thought about them, but it's been a long day, so.
That's the same thing on Populatic, we get a lot of particles and everything, that we have to repair ourselves from water.
But they're not gonna be driving the construction.
No, no, I'm saying from water.
Have you looked into the regs on the distance from the well?
Pull up a map of my property.
The distance from where you have your septic-
110 Populatic Street Extension.
I won't verify that, it's supposed to be 100 feet away from any well, so I'll verify his well.
Can you just check that out first?
Plus, the Board of Health wouldn't approve that.
Right, this hasn't gone in front of Board of Health yet, all we did so far is just the soil testing.
Everybody can identify that on the next drawing, where the well is to the neighbor in the distance.
Correct.
I think it's Mr. Buskett, is it Buskett?
What?
The last name is Buskett?
No, it's not, it's-
Sean Noonan.
Okay, so Buskett is a different person?
I don't know where that Buskett came from on the drawing.
Yeah, it's Noonan?
Noonan, yeah.
You might be, you might be shared ownership or something. I'm sorry, what's the size of the structure anyways? I was trying to figure out, is this a single-story or a two-story building?
It's a regular two-story.
A two-story building up on the, on the moon?
It's a single-story, but it has a walkout basement.
Oh, okay, it's a single-story.
Correct, it's 52 by 28.
And the garage looks like it's under?
It is a garage under, yes.
I'd like to have a site visit, if we could schedule, schedule that.
I'd like to coordinate it with Peter, so that he comes up with us.
Yes, do a site visit.
Can you do it this weekend? Because I'm, I'm leaving for vacation for nine days after the 4th. I know it's, it's short notice, but if we could meet Saturday or Sunday, I'd be, unless, unless Tom and his father, Karen can meet you out there, but I'd like to be out there when you guys are walking in.
I'm available anytime.
Can I ask?
I'm leaving for California, but you guys can go without me.
When's our next hearing, the 18th?
Yes.
Are you leaving?
If you guys are all meeting to discuss this-
We could do it when you, you're gone for nine days?
Yes, I'll be back, I'll be back, I'll be back either, we could do it the 16th.
You're back on the 16th?
Yeah. Or the 15th, that's Sunday, Sunday's the 15th.
Tomorrow afternoon, I'm working, 5 o'clock.
I could meet anytime next week, up until the 4th, after 5, after 5 o'clock, if you want to do it next week.
You can go without me.
You know, and everyone, seriously, I'm fine with that. And that would give me time, if you want me to stake anything, like the house box, I could stake the house box in the septic.
Next Wednesday, you round next Wednesday?
Yeah.
He's not, he's not here, he won't be here next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday-
He'll be gone.
I, I could, I could meet you there if we did it early, like 4:30.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm driving to New Jersey.
Next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Before 4:30, though.
So, next Wednesday at 4:30 PM?
Well, it has to be before that.
Oh, that's fine.
You're on TV, you don't want to-
Yeah, but I, she's, we don't, I don't live, I don't live enough far.
We don't want to cause any marital discourse here, could we make it 4 o'clock, Mike?
Make 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock?
4 o'clock is fine.
That's fine.
Even though I have trouble getting there.
You have trouble before 6:00.
I, I know that.
But is there at least three people who know for sure they can make it?
Yeah.
At least three have to make it.
You know, of concern, as you heard the Butters, we wanna, we wanna hear your thoughts on how you're gonna mitigate, when you tear down that 1.5-story building, how you're gonna mitigate the soil conditions, you're gonna have to take some trees down, landslide issues, that's, you know, we're gonna be looking on how you're gonna handle that issue.
What's the final, you know, to make sure the neighbors aren't adversely affected?
Can I ask a question? I want to ask a question about the road. In terms of your access to this property, it's coming into this cottage way?
Yeah.
Right, so where's the closest paved road or closest town-approved road before you touch that?
From here?
Like, when you come to that way that's private, where's the, where's the town-accepted road that you come off of?
Yeah, whatever, I don't know, this, I don't know, this is Populatic right here?
No. No. Right, there's Cottage Ave, at the end of Cottage Ave is Populatic Street Extension.
Right, and that's a town road, right? Populatic Street Extension?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically-
Right, right, right. So, the condition of the road right now, when you enter this private area, what is the, the condition of this road, appropriate for the trucks you need to bring in here? In terms, I know it's just a dirt road probably, right, or gravel road?
It's, it's paved.
Oh, it is paved?
It's paved.
Okay, so it was paved privately a long time ago, I guess, right?
Yeah, and he does have an easement that, to the best of my knowledge, he has an easement to come, come down here.
So when they're repairing the road, how are you repairing the road?
He's saying he has paved road.
Yeah.
That's been very generous calling it a paved road, it's not really paved road. It's Franklin.
This is not.
Yeah.
Right at the, right where Cottage Ave starts, it's a dirt road that goes on Populatic Street Extension, then turns to Franklin Ave, then turns to, what is it, Midway Ave, whatever it is. So that's all dirt roads.
Right.
But he's gotta get on a dirt, because he's going through my property, bring all this construction equipment, and I know it's an easement. It's a 15-foot wide road.
He does have an easement to go through your property to gain access to it, okay.
Right, right, right. When you're ready. I know we got a couple, I was asking questions about the road, you know, in terms of, it's the ability for the trucks to come into here, you know, and is the road, you know, sound enough for that, and that, you know, is there anything they need to do to make sure the road?
Motion to make a site visit, Mike?
Say that again?
No, we just scheduled it.
Yes, it is.
Okay, Chris, can you-
I'm not doing anything up there, the pavement's gonna stay. What would you like staked for the sidewalk? Would you like anything staked, the house, the-
Yeah, if you want to stake out the house, what it's going, obviously, that would be helpful.
Because everything else is still there, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Pro's house, the proposed lot line, the lot lines?
The lot lines are staked.
Okay.
And could, in terms of, I don't know if this is possible, but tell me if I'm out of line, but in, in front of the one-and-a-half skirt with frame concrete foundation to be raised, exactly where it's spreading, could you put, like, ribbons on trees that you think might have to be removed, because I hear that to be a concern as it relates, so, again, I'm talking in the upper left-hand corner of the, of the area where you're gonna, yeah, could you, along that property line of Bremlist and Davenport, put some, just throw some string or ribbons or something around the trees that you expect that you have to remove in order to get equipment in there to raise the house, because obviously you have to bring equipment in to raise the house.
I actually tied strings to his actual proposed things and just ran a string right across to, to, to see what the line was.
He's talking about the trees.
No, no.
The actual trees.
No, I'm just saying, I ran a string from his, from his survey language, I'm not even disputing the line, it is correct, and it, that will show you where, you know, it's a red string line should show you where it is.
Right, but we're actually talking about the trees, though.
I will, I will, I will put, I put ribbon on all the trees.
That would be terrific, because what I heard was concerns about drainage, and trees obviously absorb a lot of moisture and water coming down, so-
That's your pick.
There's a difference between cutting five trees and 55 trees, and I have no idea.
You cut the trees where the proposed house goes, we could probably go in that.
Everybody has one, she makes extra.
I don't think I heard any concern about that, what I heard about is the trees abutting Mr. Davenport's Bremlist line and the structure to be raised, that's what I heard.
You take the trees out where the house is gonna go, the new house, you should be able to drive down there and take all those structures out without taking out trees on the lot line and driving down there, there's no need.
Yeah, if that's the case, that would certainly seem to mitigate, that would seem to mitigate Mr. Davenport's concerns, if that's the case.
My main concerns are just the drainage issues.
Do these folks share the same concerns? Yeah.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing till May 18th. Amy, we have already a pretty full load on May 18th, don't we?
We do, yes.
So, I think we're tied up till 9 o'clock, aren't we, or 8:45 on that day?
The last one starts at 8:30.
And that's Michael Brogan?
Um, yes.
So we could probably do this at 8:45?
Yeah.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing with regard to Thomas Orlando for a F4B Norfolk Southern Bilogue, for demolition reconstruction of existing non-conforming lot that does not violate the requirements to a greater extent than the original structure, till 8:45 PM on May 18th.
Mayor, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close? Mayor, a second? Motion to close, mayor, a second?
Yeah, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we have to do a public notice for the Wednesday? Public notice for Wednesday?
Amy's gonna have to do a public notice, yes.
You gotta do public notice Wednesday?
Yeah, we'll have to tell, we'll remind her.
Was any of this relevant to what we're supposed to do?
We're not done, we're not, we're still, we're still gonna talk to the public hearing for Pine Street, even though we're-
Right, we still, we have to mention that.
We have Pine Street to deal with.
We don't have to do that, because it actually is a two-year, and it's only, we approved, last year we gave him an extension, so we can actually discuss that for a minute.
Thank you.
I think she's got a soft area.
I'm sorry, continue.
Oh, okay.
Well, for Wednesday, you have to post-
An administrative note, 27 Pine Street Extension, we had that scheduled tonight to discuss, we realized that his permit is for a two-year period of time, not for one year, therefore, we notified the applicant that he did not need to come in tonight, so, that's an administrative note to tonight's meeting.
So there's no formality, you don't have to open and close a hearing right now?
And Amy, you're gonna do a public notice for the site walkthrough at Cottage?
Yes.
Okay, okay, is there enough time for that?
Um, so, you're gonna do it on Wednesday, so-
At 4:00 PM. Is there enough time?
We don't need a public notice for that.
Is there gonna be a quorum, and are you gonna deliberate?
No.
No.
No, we don't need a public notice.
If you don't have a quorum, and you're not gonna deliberate-
We're gonna have a quorum, because there's gonna be three of us at least.
You don't deliberate, I think you don't?
We don't deliberate.
We don't have to deliberate, no.
We don't even talk to each other.
We'll just have a site view.
We report back at-
Right.
Don, you're the only one who talks to these meetings.
It's a May 18th meeting, we don't have to do a-
Yeah.